It's six o'clock, December fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. Laguna Beach Unified School Board's open session is called to order. Let's start with our student board representative, Nick, leading us in the pledge. Nick?
Put your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you, Nick. This moves us to five C, report on closed session action. And there's no report out of closed session. This moves us to five D, adoption of the agenda. Dr. Valoria, any changes to our agenda?
No changes.
Thank you. Members, can I have a motion and a second to adopt tonight's agenda as presented? Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? So you're gonna vote? Okay. Student provisional vote? Yes. Okay, wonderful. Board members? All in favor? Any opposed? Okay. Motion carries. Four. Zero, one. We're now moving to six A, public comment. Victoria, do we have any members of the public wishing to make public comment?
We do. Elizabeth Housenour?
All right, Mrs. Hanauer, you may come to the podium. And you have three minutes, whenever you're ready.
Great. Hi there, I'm Elizabeth Hanauer. I grew up here, moved away for many years, and moved back about six years ago with my family so my son Ollie could start kinder at top of the world when Mr. Conlon was there. Hopefully you don't remember Ollie. Just wanted to talk briefly about an advocacy group I've recently started called Families for Laguna Youth, or FLY. This really came about with the city being an escrow for the St. Catherine site. Something I've noticed after moving to town and talking to others where the beach is great and it's really fun for the kids to hang out there. Seems like there's a little bit of a dearth for, quite frankly, facilities and things for kids to do around town. My daughter Clara started taking diving at the Crown Valley Community Pool two months ago. And when I got there, I saw about eight kids from Laguna doing both diving and swimming. Because, you know, there really isn't a place to do it in town. There's a high school pool, but it's just not available that often. I actually brought them because we're leaving town, we're leaving directly from here to take Ollie, you know, out of town to do something for him as well. So I did start hearing about other groups starting to form and kind of jostle into place and organize to try to get their two cents on what happens at the site. And I, you know, historically, families tend to not really have time to get involved with city matters. And so I just didn't want us to fall by the wayside with the unique opportunity to the site this size being redeveloped. You know, it'd be great if we could get some sort of rec center or recreational facilities for youth there. So I started this group recently, and I've talked to all the PTAs and Boys and Girls Club and School Power. So far, everyone's on board, and it's really just so we can provide a united voice and give our two cents to the city on what happens at the site. I'd love to, you know, see if the school board would be in support of joining. It's really just an alliance so we can kind of vocalize, you know, the needs of our youth and see things happen at St. Catherine's that can serve our kids and families as well as the community at large. So that's what it is. I've got just a brief mission statement here that anyone's free to grab. You know, are there any questions? Or maybe there can't be questions.
All righty, thank you, Mrs. Hanauer. And we can make sure that those get distributed. Are there any other members of the public wishing to speak? Okay, thank you very much. This moves us to item seven A, student board members. It looks like tonight, Nick, you're going to be giving the report. All righty, the floor is yours.
Thank you. So starting off with the elementary schools. El Moro had their Harvest Day celebration, their book fair, their student council hot chocolate day. They actually won cutest tree at the winter sawdust festival, and their choir students also sang in the festival. And on the staff side, El Moro is preparing a professional development day for January ninth, where they're going to focus on restorative practices, social emotional learning, enhancing learning with technology, and integrating the next generation science standards with their classrooms. Over at TOW, they had their book fair and their kinder holiday sing. And they're focusing on having fun experiences with both students and staff just before the break. Fourth and fifth grades have also had their own holiday marketplaces to provide parents, staff, and peers a variety of gifts they can purchase. Honors chorus performed at hospitality night and at the sawdust festival. TOW also kicked off their first school-wide No Place For Hate activity, which involves learning and discussing the importance of including others. Three TOW students were recognized for their artwork in the city's palette contest. And a new season of the after-school program will be starting on January seventeenth next year. That involves both schools, so both El Moro and TOW. Moving on to LBHS, the breaker team had another meeting where it continued its discussion on equity, inclusivity, and diversity. And the team has plans to break up into focus groups and also work with Ed Elements come second semester. Holiday music wrapped up last week. ASP organized dress-up days this week, which is a cool way to kind of build a sense of unity around the school, and it's also just creates a fun environment before finals roll around. LBHS also sold eighty, eight hundred and eighty-four AP tests across three hundred and eighty-three students, which exceeds the about seven hundred sold last year. So it's great to see that a lot more students are taking more AP courses and more AP tests. I think it's a great way to, you know, challenge yourself academically by exposing yourself to college-level coursework. And then, of course, there's some college credits on the table there as well. LBHS is also continuing the conversation regarding the eight-period bell schedule. So again, this is the schedule that's going to allow students to take thirty-two classes over the course of their high school career instead of just the twenty-four. So this is a schedule designed to reduce stress and add balance as well as flexibility, and then also support students since they don't have to drop a period or anything to go to study hall. Tutorial is going to be designed to be more flexible for students, so students will actually be able to choose where they want, where they're, right now, there is an assigned classroom that you have to go to. So this will allow students to choose wherever they feel most productive, but of course, teachers will be able to call students back to their class if they need to. And then athletes will be enrolled in seventh and eighth period for athletics, so that allows more time for class, and then athletes won't have to miss as much class to go to practice or matches or what have you. And that also kind of clears some of the stress since they don't have to worry about what they missed, and they can just focus on practice or their match or whatever it may be. And then going forward with the discussion, LBHS is, of course, looking for teacher and student input, so they have actually pushed out a survey to ninth, tenth, and eleventh grades, just to determine, you know, what needs they have or what classes they would take and so on. And then, of course, more information will be coming forward as that discussion continues. And then, last but not least, Thurston is distributing those stickers to the students who enrolled in the e-bike safety course at the beginning of the year. And they'll actually continue their partnership with the Laguna Beach Police Department after the holidays to offer more course offerings, since we're probably going to get some more e-bikes trickling in after the holidays. Thurston is also completing its second round of ELA and math diagnostics to determine which students need support and which students no longer need support. TMS Theater is performing Frozen tonight and tomorrow night, and actually, the tickets for tonight did sell out, so that's doing really well. And then, of course, Thurston also held learning walks where staff presented useful teaching strategies to one another. So these strategies kind of circle around student engagement and putting emphasis on the district's recent work of the profile of a graduate. And then Mr. Vidal wanted to give a big thank you to Dr. Mayberry for connecting with some of the leadership students and visiting some classrooms as well. That should be it for the report. Thank you.
Thank you, Nick. We always appreciate the report on each of the sites. This moves us to report B for bargaining units. It looks like we have Mrs. Ziyak here, and you have the floor.
Thank you. Good evening. Happy holidays. First, I just want to say thank you on behalf of CSCA for the wonderful holiday party. People were speaking very highly of it last night and today, so it really made everybody's week, and it's very much appreciated. So everyone's hard work is also very much appreciated. So thank you, Jen, and the team at the district for doing that. We have been working on RPD with the district for the secondary sites for January ninth and have a pretty good schedule set there now. So that should be a very nice and fun day for everybody relaxing to start the second semester. We, yesterday was a really fun day for us because we gave out our classified employees of the year yesterday. And Amy Ting Grady's from the high school, our workability and transition coordinator, who is much deserved with it, won it and was completely shocked. She thought she was in trouble when she saw. So that was just a lot of fun. And then to give the rest to the category winners of Missy Polino and Dory Bunting and John Gonzalez and Alex Garcia. So it's just, it's always a great time, and it really makes people feel appreciated. So I, we appreciate you doing that. Lastly, I have is, we did our survey of all of our members to start our sunshine policy and really happy with the results we got back and the amount of people who participated in our survey. And the negotiations team met and sent the letter, and it is now going through our field office for the six-ten policy so that we can get it to Mike, and he can get it to you. So otherwise, everything is going really well. I think we're all ready for the break, including the kids. So just looking forward to that and coming back refreshed and starting our second semester and the rest of the year. Thank you.
Wonderful report. Thank you very much. We're going to move on to six C, our school resource officer. I'll call Officer Yielding to the podium.
Since I was up here giving a report, so it's good to see everybody again. There's a couple of things I wanted to highlight that we've done over the past couple of months, starting with our Shop With The Cop program that we had this week. So we took a total of twelve kids that was recommended by the district to take them to the Irvine Spectrum, and they get a certain amount of money. They get to go and go shopping with us. So we took a party bus, which was supplied by School Power, so a big thank you to School Power and the district for allowing us to be able to go do that. But kids had a blast. We were singing Christmas songs in the party bus on the way to the Spectrum. Shopped for about three hours. I think I walked about four miles with my kiddo, but each kid had an officer assigned to them. So it was a ton of fun. Ate lunch at Dave and Buster's and played some video games. So they were raving about it at the end. We met the parents back at the police station, had the gifts, gifts all wrapped up, ready to go for them. They were walking out with big piles of gifts in their hands out to their parents. So it was a very, very positive event, ton of fun. We look forward to it every year. To touch on the e-bike topic, like our student board representative said, we're pushing forward with the permits for Thurston Middle School. And actually, what was really exciting though is we got, we got, we've been getting recognition across the state for our forward thinking in partnership with the district as far as our e-bike enforcement and education is concerned. Actually have a Zoom meeting tomorrow morning with Cycle California, which is a larger group across the state, Santa Barbara, San Diego County. So it's a bunch of local representatives, council members, other local law enforcement, and then cycle enthusiasts to get together to talk about what, moving forward, what we're going to do with the e-bike stuff. So I'm looking forward to that because it goes to show what we're doing here in Laguna Beach with the district and with our police department. It's being recognized statewide. So it was pretty cool to be invited to that. And I'm excited about that. Something that we did over Thanksgiving with Top of the World, we worked with our city council. We were able to get a food drive together, and then we delivered food to be able to be distributed to in-needs families. And then last, I'm very, very proud of our football team. They did a lot of hard work over the season, and it's the first championship, I believe, in sixty-two years. So it was really fun to be a part of that, and I was able to organize a parade from the high school through downtown Laguna Beach out, out the canyon before they went on to play their championship match. So it was a ton of fun to be involved with that, and it just goes to show that relationship that we have, and a lot of positive feedback from that. So that's all I got. I know there's a lot of other stuff that obviously we do in a daily with the building relationships and all the things that we handle on a day-to-day basis, because these are kind of the highlighted things that I wanted to share with everyone. So happy holidays, Merry Christmas, and we'll be seeing you at the start of New Year. All right?
Wonderful. Thank you for your detailed report. It's so interesting to hear all those items. This moves us to seven D, our superintendent, Dr. Valoria. Floor is yours.
Good evening. To kind of piggyback on SRO Yieldings comments about our football team, a great group of young, young students setting, you know, breaking a record, finally getting through. And I know that Coach is very proud. He had kind of set out that this was his goal to be able to bring a CIF championship to the high school. So kudos to the team, the coaching staff, the high school staff as well. We will have, invite them to our February second recognition as we do for all the CIF winners. So I look forward to that. It's been kind of a busy several weeks since we last met. We had CSBA. I know we'll have comments, I'm sure, from two board members about their visit there. I've attended two schools for sound financing meetings. As I stated before, I'm on the board of that group now, and that's our group that is focused on community-funded districts, basically districts, and ensuring that we're able to lobby on behalf of our districts at the state level. Really, the big focus right now has just been on kind of what Prop twenty-eight, the arts proposition, how that's to be implemented. They're still trying to figure out some clarifying understanding around that. It's definitely a unique proposition, but it sounds like the school site principals are going to be actually responsible for generating plan that they are the ones who will hold really the keys to how the money will be spent at their school sites. So there's no formal plans that will be presented to the board for approval that it really is coming, sounds to us just from the principals. So more to come on that. This is an interesting nuance to the proposition. It would take, I think, they were saying, two-thirds of the legislators to change any of the language in there, and it would have to change it for the better. And so I don't know what, if they're going to make any, attempt to make any changes, but again, it's a little different than we've been used to. I did co-facilitate the mental health work group in the county, which is made up of superintendents as well as staff from the Orange County Healthcare Agency, CalOptima. And so it was a nice opportunity for us to hear about the work that's going on at the county level through Orange County Healthcare Agency and how we're going to continue to work together, really on behalf of all of the students in Orange County. It's one of the few items I would say that every single school district has been a part of and has agreed to be a part of moving forward. And unfortunately, Christine Olmsted, who is the superintendent of instructions, leading that work at the county level, has taken a new position in Vista. So I will no longer have a co-facilitator to work with, and so I'll have to facilitate some of that till hopefully they hire somebody in her place. But she'll definitely be missed because she was a huge push behind this work. So we wish her well. I did have an Orange County superintendent meeting, again, hearing a little bit about Prop twenty-eight there as well. We have the lobbyists from Paul Frost there. Also hearing a little bit about all the reorganizing within the state legislators, different people get onto committees. Not everything's been assigned yet. They're, they're working on who will be in those positions. For example, who's going to be heading up the education committee on both sides, in the Senate and Assembly? Who the members will be, what the makeup will look like. So that's all going to continue to kind of come out in the next several weeks. I was able to be a part of several lesson design gallery walks. Dr. Kelly was able to swing by and see one of those just recently as well. Really impressive to see our staff doing the work. And I hope the impact in the classroom will be felt. I know that they're surveying after every single lesson to see how students are receiving that lesson. It's a great opportunity for us to really see the impact. And last, I had my superintendent advisory committee, we have a meeting actually next week, but I've kind of turned the reins over to the three students, three lead students. Natalie Sutton's one of them, to really identify what is the topic they're interested in. They're really wanting to talk about normalizing the right behaviors that they expect of their peers, specific to the sustainability work. So talking about how do we, how do we normalize recycling at school? And, you know, what are ways that they can take that on? So that's the topic they wanted, they introduced, or want to speak with their fellow staff or fellow students around. So I'm excited to hear what their comments are, and that's next week. Again, thanks to the staff for putting on the holiday party. It was, I know it's a lot of work. So very appreciative of all of the energy that it takes to put that together, and thanks to Top of the World for hosting, and thank you to all the board members who were able to attend. It was nice to have all of you there. It was one of our really well-attended events, I think, coming out of COVID where we didn't get to have it for a period of time. It's one of the events I know that staff all look forward to. So I appreciate, thanks to your team as well, being there. And until the end of the year barbecue, we have the next one. So, so that's my comments for tonight.
Wonderful. Thank you, Dr. Valoria, for your report. This moves us to seven E, the executive cabinet members. Let's start with Mr. Conlon. Now, the floor is yours.
Thank you. So good evening, and as Face has shared, we did announce our employees of the year at the holiday party last night. So she recognized all the CSCA or the classified members who were recognized, and also our teacher of the year is Mindy Hawkins, special education teacher at the high school. So congratulations to her. And again, we're, congrats to all the winners, and we're so grateful for all the employees of LBHSU who make this district an incredible place to work and serve students. As Dr. Valoria shared, special shout-out to the, the holiday party committee. It's a magical event. It takes a lot of, a lot of work and effort to put on. So the members are Armin Azimi, Ashley Cole, Jennifer D'Antio, Stephanie Gamache, Kelly Murda, Erin Schroder, Lauren Stiskel, Victoria Weber, and Liz Yoder. So they did an amazing job for another spectacular holiday open house. And then knowing the age-old adage that you cannot take care of yourself if you don't first take care of yourself, you can't take care of others if you don't take care of yourself. First, we have a strong focus on wellness for staff and students in this district. Our health advocate is our employee assistance program that provides a wealth of resources for all staff, regardless of how many hours they work each week. New this year, we added a personal health advocacy component, which provides our employees access to expert healthcare or expert healthcare help when navigating situations ranging from ensuring that your child has, continues that health coverage when they maybe go to Alastair for college to helping an older family member navigate the Medicare transition process, as well as if you have a tricky health situation, and they give you access to second opinions and ways to help navigate the healthcare system when you're dealing with and just be a good advocate for yourself. So it's amazing resources. So starting in January with the launch of the Health Advocate's new website, we'll be kicking off our district wellness challenges that range in topics from physical activity tracking to hydration, healthy eating habits, to mental health self-care. We typically have four challenges each year where it motivates the staff to make healthier choices and compete for prizes. The Health Advocate platform also incentivizes the usage of all their resources by having staff earn points, up to four hundred points for accessing the challenges to watching healthy webinars or recording completion of various preventative care exams. So again, with by earning those four hundred points, it can be redeemed for up to two hundred dollars in gift cards. It's just one of the many ways that we attempt to motivate our staff to care for themselves so they can be their best self for our students. So with that, I wish you all a safe and relaxing winter break, and that's the end of my report.
Thank you, Mr. Conlon. Next, we'll go to Dr. Mayberry with Instructional Services. The floor is yours.
Thank you. Good evening. So as a lot of people have mentioned, we have finals coming up next week, so at the middle of high school. So I think there's a little bit of anxiousness. But this is also known as, for some educators, as performance season. So as we have, we have a performance here, the Frozen Kids going on. The theater class, theater one and two at the high school, we're doing a reading today. They had a dance, I think, just at the end of November. So lots of different performances going on the last few weeks as they head into our break, which is always exciting to see. I think we had three students that submitted for the recognizing the Coast Film and Music Festival this year. So, and then we also had, related to visual arts, we had eleven students that were just recognized by the city of Laguna Beach for the Children's Holiday Palette Awards. Their artwork will be posted on a palette inside City Hall through December. So that was exciting to see. I think that'll be in just this week, so that will be, those will be out soon. And then I did want to give just a shout-out to structural services and technology services staff. I will say this has probably been one of the busiest falls for parts of the year we've had around professional learning. We had educator effectiveness grant that we've been putting to work those funds. Obviously, that biggest project you've heard is around unit design, which we think will have part of the most impactful work we've done around helping students and doing a very centered approach. And we've had gallery walks with that, and we've brought, and actually, a couple of schools have already, other districts have approached us about learning more about the work we're doing there. But we're also doing lots of conferences, which really keeps the admin and staff and social services busy. Where we've had this fall, the teachers going to science, math, English conferences, counseling conferences, career education. And then we've had also get creative, and some of our more popular professional learning opportunities we've had are what we'll call sometimes called meet and greet, meet and geek or lunch bites of some of the, some of this around technology, and they come in, they get a lunch, and we do a little tech showcase. We've also done that around helping English learners, some doing some, some strategies. And then we've also expanded our opportunities to do some asynchronous learning, where they might listen to a podcast or watch a video, and then there's a reflection activity that we go back and forth with them on where they do that level of professional learning outside on their own at their own pace. So a whole wide range of things going. It's exciting to see so many teachers and staff interested in continuing to grow and learn, which is exactly what we want our kids to do, and so they're taking that on as well. So just a thank you to all the people who have helped that work and the support of the board and funding that, as well as our instructional coaching program has really been helpful because they're usually facilitating those. We do the unit design. It's a great team. Mike Morrison facilitated section. I facilitate a section on equity inclusive practices within the unit. We have our toasts. We're facilitating that. So it's really collaborative work that we do with our staff to help them in that area. So with that, I'll hand it off. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Mayberry. And next up, Mr. Dixon.
Thank you. I'll be brief, and then I can introduce our auditor for the next report. I would just echo some of what Dr. Valoria said, the CSBA conference that I was able to attend, it was the first time for me attending one of those conferences. Very well done. Lots of different resources. Love the workshops and the tabletops that we were able to do around sustainability there and really appreciative of my time. So thank you for allowing me to go and look forward to going again in the future. As I, as you know, our audit report is for acceptance tonight, and we have our lead auditor, Mr. Royce Townsend, here tonight to provide a brief summary and then answer any questions the board may have. One thing I will say is this is our last audit report with Mr. Townsend as our lead auditor. Every five years, you need to rotate your lead, and this would be his fifth. And Royce has taken us through quite a tumultuous time with the pandemic and a lot of new reporting requirements, as well as a lot of new restricted and categorical funds. And he's been an incredible resource for both. And you see another credible resource for our district here, Mr. Lee in the audience, our entire business team, and Ms. Bowie also on our finance team. And it's been great. So Royce, thank you for everything you've done over this past time, and I know we're still going to see you.
I'm sorry?
Thank you for everything you've done and still going to see you, but looking forward to working with you again in the future. So thank you.
I look forward to that. Well, thank you so much. It's a pleasure to be here this evening. So I always like to remind you that we are talking about the audit for the year ending June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-two. So we're a few months into the new year now. Always, there's a number of pages, over ninety-plus pages, so we're not going to talk about all of them. But before I talk about the specific pages that we do have, I always like to remind you as a governing board that the audit is intended to provide reasonable assurance about whether the financial statements are free of material misstatement. That's in contrast to total. Total assurance would mean that we're looking at every single transaction. That's not what we would do. Everything in this audit report is your information, other than the opinions on the three respective areas that we're going to talk to in a moment. So just bear that in mind. And lastly, as a reminder, that at the end of the day, which really you want to come away with the audit report is that it provides some assurance for you that you can rely on the information that you're getting from your business management when you're making your decisions as a governing board, and that's very critical. So with that said, I mentioned that there are ninety-three-plus pages. There's two pages that I would focus on as a governing board. So if you have your audit report in front of you, I would direct you to page eighty-nine. And this summarizes the outcome of the audit and the three specific areas that we're looking at. They're bolded to the left. You'll see financial statements, federal awards, and state compliance. So for each of these areas, we're offering an opinion, and the highest level of assurance or opinion that we can offer you is an unmodified opinion. So if you ever hear something other than unmodified, you probably want to ask the question why that's the case. So as it relates to the financial statements as a whole, we are providing you an unmodified opinion and we did not have any internal control, material weaknesses or significant deficiencies to the internal controls that support the information. For the federal awards, we were required down below, you'll see identification of major programs. We had to test a number of COVID related dollars this year. And in addition, for the very first time for this district, we had to test your child nutrition program, and that's because of the influx of additional dollars that you had, that you received and expended this year for that. So that was a unique area for this. For both of those two programs, we did not identify any compliance or internal control issues. And so once again, we're providing you an unmodified opinion. And at the very bottom, you'll see state compliance and the list of programs that were required to test just keeps expanding. There was a time when the state said, well, if we're going to add something, we're going to take something off and we're long past that. And so I would say that you probably were up to maybe 30 number of programs that you were possibly liable to be tested for. For those that we tested, once again, we did not identify any compliance issues or internal control issues that support those programs. And thus we're providing you an unmodified opinion. So from my perspective, as you as a governing board, this is probably the information that you'd like to hear. I did mention two pages and the page that I also always direct a governing board to is page 74. And that's the summary of financial trends and analysis. Why is this critical? Well, it's the only place in their audit report where you have historical information. You have three years worth of data. Plus, as you see the budget year, which is the year that you're in right now. So from my perspective, I think it's always important to see how you're doing. It allows you to figure out where you're going if you know where you've been. The positive trends that I see here is that you have a deficit spent in the past three years. Your reserves remain stable. Your ADA is declining a little bit. And the biggest change here is your long-term liabilities. And really where that has changed is your pension obligations have gone down. So we're all very cognizant of that term pension and what that means. But essentially, a couple of years ago, the state started adding monies in addition to what you as a district are contributing. And of course, with the additional contributions, the actuarially determined liability for the district has declined. So that's a really nice trend to see. Do I believe that this will ever be fully funded? No. But it's certainly moving in the right direction. So that pretty much summarizes the outcome of the audit. And as always, I'm here to answer any questions that you may have.
Board members, are there any questions from Mr. Townsend?
Is there action on this tonight? Okay, we've just received the 89 page document. I was vastly able to read 89, 84, and I've just been referred to 74. So I don't know how I can give a competent understanding of the audit on what I've been presented in the timeframe I've had to look at it.
It was, did you get the weekly update last week? I included it in there, but I may not have included the proper link, but I'm almost positive.
I didn't.
I will, I'll make sure we get it.
Because we talked about this last year about getting the document ahead of time.
With that said, if you have any questions afterwards and you'd like to direct them to the business management, I'd be happy to answer them.
Are there any other questions, board members? No, just questions for Mr. Townsend.
By in all material respects. I think that's another important statement to point out.
84? I'm sorry. So I didn't hear quite the question.
It's not a question. I'm just pointing out to you that I think it's another important thing to be aware of that in your opinion, it says the district compiled in all material respects with the compliances. That's what I was looking for.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Townsend.
Well, thanks so much.
We appreciate that. This moves us to eight A. And eight A is the acceptance and approval of the 2122 district audit as presented by the audit firm, Ed Bailey. Victoria, have you received any speaker cards? All righty. Thank you, Mr. Dixon. You have the floor again.
Thank you. This is just to accept the audit as presented. I would just to Dr. Kelly's point, note that if the board would like more time to review it before accepting it, you can. It has been submitted and successfully submitted to this date to meet the statutory requirement timeline. And we could bring it back in January like we did last year. So that's certainly something that we can do. But otherwise, I would just ask that the board accept it as presented. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dixon. Board members, are there any questions before we make a motion on this? No questions? Okay. Can I have a motion in a second then to accept and approve it?
Right. It was in the weekly update last week, but.
Thank you. My, my problem.
Dr. Kelly, did you want to postpone this item? Yes. Okay. Do we need a motion to postpone it?
I'll move to table.
Okay. All those in favor, student provisional vote to postpone, you know what we're voting on, right? To postpone approving this. Okay, board members all in favor? Okay, any opposed? Okay, motion carries four zero one. And that takes us to, so we'll see that again in January. And that takes us to B. Let's see here. This is eight B approval of positive certification of the first interim report. Victoria, have you received any speaker cards for this item?
No.
Okay, wonderful. Mr. Dixon, you have the floor again.
Okay, thank you. This will be brief. As you'll note, the first interim is simply changes to the adopted budget that we had back in July. And they're very minor. So what I will focus in on this presentation. And we'll get it up there in a minute is the just the changes, starting with revenue and then the expenditures. And then we'll look at our fund balance, how that looks in the multi-year and then staff's recommendation for certification of the budget as presented in the interim. So there's, as I mentioned, that's the overview. So when you look at the revenue changes from first interim from adopted, there's a total increase in revenues recognized about $4.7 million. The vast majority of that is due to the state adopted budget and the new categoricals or restricted funds that we're getting. And you'll see those listed on the same slide, beginning with one of the larger, more recent ones that we will come back to the board with a plan for is the Arts Music Discretionary Block Grant, going all the way down to our state lottery funds with some minor adjustments there. As you look at expenditures, it's almost an equivalent increase in the amount of expenditures. And it again is based on the receipt of those categorical funds. So we're recognizing the additional revenues and starting to assign expenditures related to those. So that's why the expenditures also increased almost the same amount as the revenues. So when you look at the ending fund balance from our adopted budget, you see on the left there of about 17 and a half million dollars. The first interim change is a larger, it's a much larger ending fund balance. But again, highlighting that most of that is coming to us as restricted funds as a result of the state budget deal for this year. So that's why it's so much larger. And when you look at the multi-year projection, again, focusing on our ending fund balance, want to focus in, you see the the total ending fund balance decline. That's because the, what the numbers are telling us here is that we're spending down those restricted funds. And so because they're one time, they no longer exist in our multi-year. So if you look in and focus in on that restricted amount or the assigned up there at a little over $9 million. When we talk about potential one-time for board goals and opportunities, notice that that's staying the same in the multi-year and that shows that various, we're maintaining a very strong fiscal position with the modifications as minor as they are. So with those changes, staff would recommend the board certify as a positive certification for first interim report. And what positive certification means is that we're able to show that we meet our current and our future financial obligations for the next two fiscal years out. And that's what our report shows. So with that, I'd be happy to take any questions from the board.
Thank you, Mr. Dixon. Any questions? No questions? Okay. Board members, can I have a motion in a second to approve the first interim?
Second.
Wonderful. See, student board members. I pardon me. Okay.
That to you and your team, because this is a lot of work and a lot of rules and regulations to follow the audit and this interim report. And I wanted to recognize that. I know it's, I depend on it. I've told you that before. I depend on the accuracy and the thoroughness. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Vickers. So we have our student board member provisional vote. Board members all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries four zero one. And this moves us to eight C, which is the approval of resolution number 22-14, which is to establish an interfund transfer of $900,000 from the general fund to the special reserve fund for facilities repair and replacement program for 2223. Victoria, have you received any speaker cards?
No.
Wonderful. Mr. Dixon, floor is yours.
Thank you. So this is our annual transfer of our Fund 40 Facility Repair Replacement Program to our, from our general fund. It's $900,000. And as a reminder, that amount was established with the initial 10-year facilities master plan, looking at the projects on that list, which established the thresholds and the amounts that we deemed at the time appropriate to support this program. Now, the facility repair replacement program is what would be commonly referred to in the past as deferred maintenance. So it's your larger maintenance projects like your roofing replacements, your larger mechanical systems, and maybe some exterior siding, depending on the material type, as long as it has a 20-year lifestyle or lifespan or more. So this again is something that we bring back to you every year and it goes to support our facilities program, which you'll see the projects identified in the facilities master plan with this funding source tied to them. So with that, we have to take any questions.
Student board members, board members, any questions for Mr. Dixon? I had one, one question. Do we know when the last time was that the amount was increased or is it set in the resolution that it's always going to be 900,000?
It has not, it is not set in the resolution for the amount. It is based on the facilities master plan and it has not changed since we've been doing it beginning in 2015.
But 2015 was the last time that was changed.
Yeah, it can change. It's not set by the resolution. It's just based on the facility projects identified in the master plan and it hasn't changed in this in this format for the transfer.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Dixon. Board members, if there's another questions, can I have a motion in a second? Wonderful. Can I have the student provisional vote? Wonderful. Board members all in favor? Roll call. Okay, Victoria, can you call a roll?
Member Malcheski?
It's a roll call because it's a resolution. It was my error. Yeah. Yeah.
Depends on what.
Yeah, good clarification.
Member Kelly?
Yes.
Member Vickers? Clerk Osborne?
Yes. All righty, motion carries four zero one. And it takes us to eight D. We have another resolution. So we'll have another roll call vote. This is resolution number 22-15 to establish an interfund transfer of 1.2 million from the general fund to the special reserve fund for capital improvement plan 2223. Victoria, are there any public comment cards on this?
No.
Okay, Mr. Dixon, the floor is yours.
Thank you. It is similar to last item. It's another transfer from general fund to Fund 40 for our capital improvement program. It's the funding to the question prior has not changed since its inception and has gone to support the projects identified in the facilities master plan. It's something we bring back annually and if that, I'd be happy to take any questions related to this.
Board members, any questions? Okay, wonderful. Student board member provisional vote? Wonderful. Oh, there's not a motion on the floor. Sorry. Wonderful. Thank you. Student provisional vote? Board members all in favor? Okay, roll call. I can call the roll. Go ahead, Victoria.
Member Malcheski? Member Kelly?
Yes.
Member Vickers? Clerk Osborne?
Eight E is approval of resolution number 22-16 to establish an interfund transfer of 1 million from the special reserve fund for the Aliso property reserve to the special reserve for the non-capital outlay fund for 22-23. Victoria, have you received any speaker cards for this?
No.
Okay. Mr. Dixon, the floor is yours.
Okay, the student board reps understand the smile. So I know I'm explaining it well. Okay. This is a little different. This is not a transfer we normally do. This is a transfer from Fund 40 to Fund 40. So we have our Aliso property reserve, which is board knows is a reserve set up in Fund 40 for based on the amortization of the loan associated with the leasing at the Aliso property. That amount in that fund would be able to be withdrawn to be at the amount of the loan as amortized by the or the lesser national church residences of the property. Today, that value is closer to around $4 million. But we have in excess of about a million dollars within our own fund. So in order to maintain the funds in a reserve account, which Fund 40 is a reserve account, we're going to take the million dollars from our Aliso property reserve. And we're going to take it and put it into our special reserve for capital outline, also known as Fund 17, which is our larger district reserve so that it still accounts for a reserve dollar amount. And it doesn't reduce our reserve amount, doesn't increase our reserve amount. It simply maintains the amount of money in our reserves that we have established today. All right. So we got a smile. Nick, thank you.
I just make one reminder regarding the lease of property. We do not own the property. It is not ours to maintain. It is owned by the church residents. This is, it's quite confusing. We get to buy it back for a dollar. So just remember, our ability to purchase it back means we don't currently own it. And we get questions about that pretty regularly now. And it is confusing for most people to understand. We don't maintain it. We have no authority for that group. They own it as they pay down their HUD loan, but the agreement is, which we'll talk at the very end of the meeting, is a reminder that we can buy it back for a dollar. So.
Thanks.
When was the last time we took money out like this? This is first time?
No, we did it a few years ago. I believe it was in 2017, 18. And it was, it was about 165, 170,000 if I remember.
And how did we get so much more now?
Because we have not withdrawn it for several years. So the amount maintained in the the reserve and rather than withdraw it, we just left it there. So our reserve stayed the same. So now that we're where we can, we have such a significant amount in there, it makes more sense to build up our larger reserve fund 17. And just so it still maintains our calculation with a community funded differential.
And Jeff, what was the year that we increased the amount when we learned that we needed an amount in there if there was a default?
Oh, I'd have to, I can look back and get, I don't remember the exact year, but I know what you're talking about and I can get that information.
Because it was less than before that.
Yes.
Member Vickers, could you repeat the question? I couldn't hear you.
Just curious to, I can't remember the year that we found out that we weren't covered in case of the default. And we would have lost the right to repurchase. So after a lot of research by our business department, we put an amount in that would cover that. And now we don't need that much because of that.
I think it's 2012. If I, yeah, I think it was 2012 when there was the First Amendment to the option of repurchase.
First amendment to the option of repurchase was then, and I think that's that point where the board realized they didn't have enough money in the reserve in case if the church went. In default, in order for the district to get it back, you would have had to pay the remainder of the loan.
And we weren't prepared for that.
And you were not prepared for that, no.
We didn't know that.
Right.
So I don't know who unearthed that, but it was.
It was a good catch. Yes.
Are there any other questions for Mr. Dixon? If there's no other questions, can I have a motion in a second to approve this item? Alrighty. Victoria, do you want to call a roll call?
Student board member. Thank you. Member Malcheski?
Yes.
Member Kelly? Member Vickers? Clerk Osborne?
Yes. That resolution passes four zero one. And that takes us to eight F. Approval of resolution twenty-two dash seventeen declaring withdrawal of membership in the school's excess liability fund joint powers authority or self. Mr. Dixon, floor is yours.
Thank you. I apologize for all the resolutions. Again, another unique one. But what this does is self is our excess liability insurance carrier. So everything beyond the base amount that a skip covers as far as our liability insurance, they cover the excess amount. One of the things that we've been looking at, in particular, working a lot with human resources, is our insurance provider and all the features and as well as the costs. Of the premiums that we've been paying. As we look and explore potential options for different insurance providers. There are procedural items that need to occur and timelines that must be met as far as withdrawing from our current insurance. This would be the first step in that, which would be putting our excess liability insurance carrier self. On notice via this resolution. Now, it doesn't mean that we are going to withdraw for next year, but it does give us the opportunity to if we decide. Whereas if we miss this deadline by December thirty-first, we are unable to do it for next fiscal year. So this allows us to continue our work to explore more insurance options. And then make a change if needed, or if not, immediately to nothing, but this would be required either way. I'd be happy to take any questions.
Any questions? Before we have a motion, questions? Nope. Can I have a motion? Wonderful. We have a motion on the floor. Is there any discussion? I have a. I guess it's a question really for Mr. Dixon, but it could go into discussion. Do we think that our premiums are too high or why are we preparing this resolution? Or do we do it every year just as we explore premiums?
No, so we do not do this resolution every year. This is the first time where we've done it in quite some time. And there is a possibility our premiums may be too high based on our existing analysis. It looks like we could have saved money if we made the switch for this current year. And we'll know more as we explore those options for next year. But unless we get this in place, it doesn't make sense for us to spin our wheels and make a change because we wouldn't be able to. So that's why we're doing this.
Okay, wonderful. Alrighty, we have a motion on the floor. Is there any other questions? Alrighty, Victoria, can you call, roll call vote?
Student board member? Thank you. Member Malcheski? Member Kelly?
Yes.
Member Vickers? Clerk Osborne?
Yes. A resolution passes four zero one. And we're back to eight G. Approval to award contracts for unit cost maintenance bids. Victoria, any public comment on this item?
No.
Okay, Mr. Dixon, this item is yours as well.
Thank you. Compliment, Mr. Zaid on his bid packages here. This is actually a very complex thing to do, is put together a lot of different bids within the same bid document. What you see before you is called a unit cost bid. And you noted the unit costs are based on various trades. So various types of construction and maintenance work that may occur. The reason we use a unit cost is because of their bid limits that are set by the state of California. And they're fairly low, especially given the cost of construction for a lot of our major construction and maintenance projects today. So what this does is allows us to contract with any of these firms who submitted the lowest responsive and responsible bid. Or we could not use them and go outside with some other vendors so long it was under the bid limit. But if it's over the bid limit, we would be able to use these bidders or compare them to another bid that we do. So there is no financial implication to using this unit cost bid. It simply gives us a means to accomplish the work. Or compare the cost of our work with other proposals we get along the way. I'd be happy to take any questions.
Board members, any questions for Mr. Dixon on this item? For Kelly, you have your microphone on.
So the hypotheticals, we've used them. We have experience with using them.
So we do have experience using these contractors. And the hypothetical, when they say hypothetical on the bid amounts, is that what you're referring to? That's based on a fictitious project. So they're having to bid it as if they're going to do the work for the project, and that's how we base the award on.
Okay, board members, if there's no other questions, can I have a motion?
Moved.
Wonderful. Any discussion amongst ourselves? Discussion? Okay. All those in favor? Zoe, you just have to hop in there. I'll look at you and I'll look at them. I can't hear you very well either. Okay. Motion carries four one. Four zero one, pardon me. And this takes us to our consent calendar. Nine A. Victoria, do we have any members of the public wishing to comment on the consent calendar? Okay. Alrighty. Okay. Nine B, approval of consent calendar items. We're looking at items C through L. Do any members wish to make a comment or ask a question on consent? No? Okay. Can I have a motion to approve all the items C through L? Okay, wonderful. Zoe, may I have your provisional vote? Board members? Okay, wonderful. Our consent calendar item. Is approved, four zero one. We are. To ten A, governance. Jason, you want to lead this item or would you like me to?
I'll lead it.
Okay. Right, I don't.
Has to do with you, so go ahead. So. The CSBA has delegates. Obviously, the board votes on those delegates to send to the delegate assembly. Every year. In order for a delegate to be on the ballot, the board of education that that delegate sits on, school board member sits on. Needs to approve of that person's attendance to be on the actual ballot. So with that, Member Osborne has thrown her hat in the ring. She was talked into running to be on the delegate assembly, which I really appreciate. Because as she and I spoke about CSBA and the power of Orange County at the delegate assembly. Orange County has a very loud voice in that room. And it would be helpful to have Member Osborne's voice in that room to represent Laguna Beach as well as other Orange County school districts. So it's, I believe, a two-year term. And Member Osborne is requesting that you approve her to be on the ballot for delegate assembly.
Thanks, Dr. Loria. Sorry, Member Vickers, did I? Yes, you moved and Dr. Kelly seconded. Okay. And any discussion?
Yeah, so it's every region has representation, and so it meets twice a year, meets in May and then, I believe, May and then once again, or April, sorry. May and Sacramento and then again prior to CSBA, the conference.
Yeah, one day prior. I think twenty.
Less.
Seventeen? Okay, seventeen then, right? Okay.
Let me add my thanks to Jason's for taking the sound.
Yeah, and I do think, I didn't realize Orange County was the largest block. Other, like for example, LA unified the way that certain things are, even though they have more students, the way that the delegates are divided. You know, just means that Orange County really has a voice. And I, I think there's an opportunity for community funded districts like ours to have our voice better heard in Sacramento. And I noticed a lot of the lobbying work that CSBA was doing was missing that voice. It was there subtly, but I think more districts in Orange County are facing that or contemplating moving in or out of community funded status. So definitely think there's an opportunity there. So any other discussion? Yes, and we'll see a ballot with all of the. Yes, yes, exactly, so.
Now you know one person for sure.
Now you know one person. That's right, that's right. And I have some paperwork I have to fill out, but we need this, this vote first, so. Alrighty, we'll start with student provisional vote. Thanks, Zoe. Board members, all in favor? Any opposed? Okay, motion carries four zero one. And this takes us to. Item. Ten B. And is it possible that we have a motion to adjourn for a quick five-minute break? Yep, okay, can I have a motion on that? Okay, thank you. We're adjourned at seven oh one and we'll return at seven oh six. And we're going to get started. We're going to call the meeting back to order. Alright, we're moving to ten B. This is the second reading and approval of board policies in the four thousand series. Mrs. Weber, have you received any speaker cards on this item?
Yeah.
Okay, wonderful. On October twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-two, in coordination with the executive cabinet and our attorneys A A L R R. The board reviewed the policies as identified below in the item. And a first reading was held on November seventeenth, twenty twenty-two. Board members, including student board members, do you guys have any questions on these policies before we have a motion? Any questions? No questions? Okay, may I have a motion? All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries four zero one. Alrighty, we're moving to ten C. This is approval of second reading and approval of board policies in the five thousand series. Victoria, could you pull the item up? The detail item up, or I can. I just want to read off the actual policy numbers that were. Yes, that's fine. I know.
Five one three two appearance standards. Five one four five point one one questioning and apprehension by law enforcement. Five one four five point one two search and seizure.
Thank you, Mrs. Weber. Are there any questions on ten C? No questions? Board members, can I have a motion in a second? Alrighty, student board member provisional vote? Board members, all in favor? Any opposed? Okay, motion carries four zero one. We're going to move to. D, second reading and approval of board policies in the six thousand series. Mrs. Weber, could you read the policies in the six thousand series?
Yes, and I have received no speaker cards on this.
Thank you.
Six one four six point one, high school graduation requirements. Six one five eight, independent study. Sixty-two hundred, adult education.
Thank you very much. Alrighty, do we have questions on those? Any questions on those policies in the six thousand? Okay. May I have a motion in a second to approve the policies in the six thousand series? Wonderful, okay. All those in favor, including the student provisional vote? Board members? Wonderful, motion carries four zero one. And this takes us to our governance section. Board members, this section is to provide a brief report to our fellow members of actions or items or attendance at things that falls within the scope of our roles as board members. Let's see. Who would like to start? Let's actually ask who would like to start. We always go in order from the back of the table to the front, but would anybody like to start? Okay, wonderful.
So I just want to say a couple of brief things. One is that I was very glad to have been able to attend for. The day, the statewide. I'm forgetting the acronym for it, yeah, last week. For a couple of reasons. One, it was just really great to see what a wonderful leadership team we have. And how, you know, nicely everyone worked together, but I also learned a lot. We went to some great workshops. I also attended one that ever, that nobody else did on democracy and education, which is. A personal interest of mine in terms of my work, but also just so important in this particular moment. And it made me think a lot about the curriculum we might have in high school and the things that we have to think about as a district. In terms of how we promote civic engagement. So just generally, I learned a ton and it was a very good experience. I was glad I was there. The other thing that I did recently was go to. The TOW, I forget what they call it, but they acknowledge all the kids, which is partially helping. It's once a month, it's student recognition. And, and all the parents come and I thought it was just such a, I mean, so many kids were recognized. But it was also just a really fantastic way of promoting in a positive way, you know, behaviors in a really, you know, terrific school environment. So that, that was also a very nice experience. So that's it.
Thank you for your board report, Dr. Malcheski. We'll move on to Dr. Kelly.
I was really happy to have been at the high school when they made the awards for the classified employee of the year and the teacher of the year. And I got to congratulate the two winners on behalf of the board for their outstanding service. I also was delighted to participate in watching the teachers present their courses that they had been working on in teams. And it was just impressive to see them even presenting them to teachers. One was a teacher, a reading test, TESL teacher at the top of the world. TESL at the top of the world. And the other one was the guy who plays, who teaches band. And, and they went back and forth on, on how they developed these courses and how they were integrating them with evaluations. And the various websites that they were using. And I didn't know what grade level it was. And, and I was just blown away because I think it was like third grade was the ones. And I thought it was a high school class. And so I guess I cannot go back to school. I mean, when I went the last time and saw the kindergartners working with robots. That was a real awakening. But I was just really impressed and really impressed with the teachers and the involvement between one another. And how it, how it has a ripple effect as far as on the rest of the district as far as on what they're doing. And for all of the great work that Mike has done with, with working with them. That it's, it's just, one of the positive things of COVID, it came out of COVID was. Getting faculty involved in online distance and mediated instruction that is just incredible.
Wonderful. Thank you for your report, Dr. Kelly. Member Vickers, floor is yours.
Thank you. Attended the CCA business meeting. And it was a pretty, a pretty good meeting. And there are some things I'd like to submit that would be better, I think, put in the weekly update. Rather than try to go through them here, if that's more time efficient. I would also echo your comments, Dr. Lori, on the football team. I know that Coach Shanahan has worked long and hard on developing that program. And his quarterback is a sophomore. So I think he's looking forward to a couple more very successful years and bringing more attention to Laguna's program. Which has been a long time in coming, coming full circle, I guess, to a stronger program. And school size does not make that much difference if you have a real dedicated coach and. Inspire that in kids. That's a personal belief I've always had, and I think this helps to prove that. That the last game they had here was an experience. I mean, it was just a back and forth scoring phenomenon. They got a little, little note of that in an LA Times sports article about it being a wild game. But it was, it had a good crowd. It was just really a nice, as towns, as towns are very supportive of their schools. I just want to follow up on all the transfers we did, Mr. Dixon. I think that, again, give credit to this district for our financial stability and our ability to be self-funded. And to be, go beyond just funding our general fund, but to be able to commit to setting aside these funds. And do what we can. And do what we can do in this district on the facilities and also the continued upholding of the commitment to the FERC. Which came with the passing of the bond. It's just really important that when we make a commitment to the community that we have followed through on that. With a lot of, a lot of ethics, I think it's, we need, we need more acknowledgement of that because it's not always easy to do. And it, as I said, you know, we count on that accuracy of our finances, but we, it's well managed. And then. Just a couple of quickly, a couple of things that I've noted recently. Such increased concern on children's mental health. Mental wellness and that we really, we do a lot of work in that area. We started early thanks to Dr. Valoria. And our commitment to the S E L, but we. It seems that there are just new things coming up all the time now, coming out of this unique experience of of the pandemic. And we will continue, I think, to address that. I'm faithful that that faith in it that we will because it seems that they're learning more and more things like the one. About the changes in the brain. And of course, there's no way, it's so unique, they don't know what the future holds, but I I just know that that we are. Well staffed in that in that area. And. I support that commitment. The other is the change in the parent rights groups that are attempting to. Place members on boards of education. And there was, I think they took a majority in Temecula. I think that was one of the ones, but it's. The prediction is it will increase in the next election, being a presidential election, and. There's just great concern among educators of. You know, what what that means. And I'm watching that. And I know, I'm sure you all are too. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Vickers. I appreciate everybody's reports. For my report, I wanted to touch briefly on CSBA. I really enjoyed the time with our district leadership, with our superintendent. With Dr. Malchesky, it was really nice time well spent. Some of the things that we learned about were. Our commitment to professional governance. I got a great handout. It's only one page, Jim, not ninety. So I'll pass these down. Really good, helpful information on just dealing with community concerns. You know, we hear. And get contact from the public, from parents all the time, and. This handout talked about how to really be an effective listener and how to put people back in the system at the right place. So I appreciated not only getting it, but talking with other board members, you know, there's. Hundreds of them at CSBA and they all deal with what we deal with. And how you most effectively deal with people because that's what we're there to to hear is to hear from our community. And so I thought that was really worthwhile. We also talked a little bit about governance protocols. And there were a couple of new protocols that were maybe of interest to. As a board in our next governance workshop to talk about adding, just so we always know how we have agreed. Or we have an agreement on how we go about certain types of our work as board members. So that was really helpful to learn about. I also really liked the concept of a governance calendar, what kind of items come before us each month. And I know Dr. Valoria already had something in the works on that. But helpful to kind of put our year into reference as board members because there's a lot of information that comes at us. And kind of knowing what comes each month or each quarter, I think, is really helpful. For us trying to do our best work. I appreciated the table talk on electrifying our bus fleets. I went to that with Mr. Dixon. That was really interesting. We got to go in a bus and take a tour. And that was just really neat. And then we also attended a workshop on new significant legal cases that are affecting education. We heard about First Amendment rights and religion in schools. We heard about flag raisings and free speech. And we heard about board members' use of social media. Three really important cases that they went into depth with and what their impacts on school districts and boards were. So that was CSBA. From facilities, the committee that Member Vickers and I sit on, we've been having various meetings throughout the fall and the winter. And really looking forward to the work that's coming out of that. Looking at our short and long term needs in the district and really trying to think. At a deeper level about what facilities in Laguna Beach Unified look like. And I know the board has been doing work on that for years, at least since I've been on here, but I'm really looking forward to. Seeing the outcome of some of that work. Next or third, I wanted to see if with my fellow board members, we had maybe some consensus for. Next meeting potentially talking about, we had a public comment about Families for Laguna Youth. That was the fly. Alliance that wants to kind of align around what. The outcome of St. Catherine's would be, and I want to know if we could have an item next. Meeting. To talk about that. We can't talk about that here because it's not agendized, but how we might. If or how we might support or be involved with that group. So does anybody have any issues with that if we would put that on an agenda item in governance?
Just seeing your consensus, if people are okay with us adding an item. I mean, it's, we have the ability to anyways through your board bylaw would allow you to add an item, but. I think the intent is if everyone's in agreement that this would be something that they'd be willing to talk about.
In governance.
In governance.
And next time, we can't talk about it here. If somebody's not interested or if the majority of us aren't interested, then I don't want us to spend any time on it, obviously. Okay.
I saw enough hits, none, I think you're good.
Okay.
I said I saw Dr. Malchesky said none a little bit too, so.
Okay, okay. That's okay. Yeah, we're just looking for consensus, so we'll put that in governance for next month. And then I wanted to give you guys, I know I'm going over my. Three minutes, but I don't think I gave an update last time because it was a long meeting and tonight it's only seven twenty two. But I want to give you a couple of updates on school power. Their trustees meet five times a year. They met last night here in the library. So the the School Power Foundation is obviously a big fundraising arm. So far this year, they've raised three hundred and sixty five thousand dollars for our schools. Their goal is five hundred thousand for the year. They're on track year over year compared to last year. And. You know, I I think, you know, one of the the new things that they're doing this year is trying to run more programs and trying to do more community outreach. So they have a whole list of programs that they've supported. I think Dr. Yield or Officer Yielding was at parent talked about the shop with a cop. They've done gift baskets for families. They did new family welcome baskets. They've done two, two book clubs, one which completed in the fall, which was this book, which the district has brought the speaker out before. And then starting up in January and February is Dr. Mark Brackett, this book. And they've just had really good success. So. I'm, I'm really pleased to see them try and transition from just a fundraising arm to more of a family engagement arm. Because what I see is that they're very effective. At engaging parents, you know, they sold out their book clubs and they get a lot of parents there, and I think that's really neat to see. They're also having a lot of success with taking over the after school programming at our elementary school campuses. Those also have sold out. They are, they gave a variety of examples of some of the school grants they funded. One was a surf team underwater safety course at the high school. One was. Smart goals for Positive Behavior Reinforcement System at Thurston. And there was more examples, but those are a couple. And they're looking forward to doing a little bit of construction on the cottage in the upcoming months. So they're really busy over there. And I think, lastly, happy holidays to everybody. I wanted to extend a welcome to Dr. Malchesky. I hope you had a great first meeting. Even better if it's over by seven thirty.
You still have a little bit to go, so almost there.
Alrighty, okay, I'll turn it over. Dr. Valoria, your report.
I have no report tonight.
Okay, wonderful. Then are you ready to take over with twelve A?
I, I, I'll take it over for the short little beat that I have it. So. It is twelve A, the annual organizational meeting, and as your bylaw states. At this portion of the meeting, you will elect a president and a clerk from your members. And then you will appoint a secretary to the board. You will develop a regular scheduled meetings for the year. A calendar for the year, including board self evaluation and designate board representatives. To outside meetings, so not necessarily in that order. And then to ours, we also have the annual reminder as requested, as required by. The board to remind you of a couple of things at the NG. So. I will handle twelve B. And then the new president will handle the rest of those items. So. I need a, ask for a motion from the board. To for the election of a new president for the next year of twenty twenty three.
Are you calling on me first? Okay. Okay, I wanted to nominate a member Vickers for president for next year.
Do I have a second? Dr. Kelly, second? All those in favor? Opposed? Alright, our president Vickers, it's your turn.
Our next item is twelve C. And that's for nominations for clerk. Are you?
I'm nominating Kelly.
I'll second that. General second. All those in favor? Thank you for doing it again.
So that was Jim and Jonas.
Yes. And we move to twelve D, which is appointment of the secretary to the board. Oh, I don't know.
Oh, great secretary.
Right. So we have a nomination for, do we follow our standard procedure? I'll second that, or can I second Kelly? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Oh. Twelve E is appointment of board representatives to outside organizations and committees. I know we're minus one member, but the Victoria's provided the information of what we nominate to. And who the current representatives are and the alternates. So. And have expressed, expressed interest from anyone on. Continuing what they're doing or taking on something new, trading.
Member Vickers, just to confirm, Member Parry's, and you are staying on as the CCA. Appointed representatives for our November meeting, right?
Yes, we are at this time.
Okay.
However, if I can remind you that no alternate was selected because Dr. Kelly was not here and you wanted to wait. So if you want to do that tonight, you can.
Yeah, I think we should because we mentioned because you vote in those meetings, so your board members representing CCA, we really do always need two people there.
We do.
Okay. Alrighty.
So I I just have a couple of questions. One is that, for some reason, I went through the agenda and I missed this little section, so I don't know what some of these people do. What what some of these board. Committees do, but it also, when I'm looking at it now, it's not clear to me. What? Yeah, I'm looking at it on, yeah.
But it doesn't tell her like what they actually do or when they meet.
Right, and it also isn't clear when I look at this. It looks like every committee has somebody. Who has been working with that committee and committed to it. So it's not clear to me, like, for example. Dee Perry does the Education Foundation School Power Endowment, but she's not here. So. Is she just planning on continuing that or? So I just wasn't sure how that.
I would offer an opinion on that, that I think it's good for our own education and awareness to switch around. And I I don't know if she's done it for two years. Two years, and so she's not here, so it's kind of difficult, but I was thinking that. Dr. Kelly or yourself might want to go on that committee, then they meet. Our committees are meeting less than they used to. It's not like a monthly commitment, I don't believe, for anything except perhaps PTA council. But it's, they meet on a Friday morning.
I could give you the dates for that, Dr. Malchesky, and. Just regarding item, well, six within this item on the School Power Ed- Endowment.
Right, you're on School Power, but the endowment is.
Yeah, but the endowment deals with the financial piece, the fund behind.
Yeah, I mean, I I wasn't even specifically interested in that one. I was trying to use it hypothetically. It's like, how do we even figure out which committees to get it? I mean, I would be happy to do that.
Boards go through different things about you own a committee and nobody wants to give it up, and so they own it forever and ever, but I, but I also know that there's. Sometimes people would like to get a taste of something else because they, you know, they want a little familiar familiarity with that area. And then so.
And I.
I wasn't suggesting that.
Yeah, yeah, well, it's, it's something I.
I thought of Dr. Kelly.
I could certainly do that, but I also feel like I want to do what is helpful to the board, but I also have limited time commitments because of work, so it's hard for me to just. Say, you know, this is what I'll do. I'm happy to do the endowment if people think that's a useful thing for me to do, but. Um, you know, there may be other things.
As a new member, is there something that you see as? More helpful?
So what I would say, just going down the list, the. The general role, with the exception, I would say, of number three, because that's. Really specific to board, but the general role in the, in these meetings is to present what it is the board is is doing in those. So, for example, a report, as a member Osborne gave a report last night to School Power, so what's going on? At the board level is what the goal is in the committee. So reviewing kind of actions you're taking as a board and then doing exactly what Member Osborne did tonight, which is report back what was discussed, right? At at that meeting, and if necessary, if there's a larger update, letting me know as Member Vickers is is sharing. So it's not, there's an, in the committees themselves, with the exception, again, of the. School Board Association Committee. Really, it's, it's more of an update here what they're having to say. There's no voting, nothing like that, because we're not actually. Members of the Executive Committee for Endowment, and so when they vote, we sit quietly by this on the, on the corner. So we're not physically a member. The ones that meet the least would be the Orange County Nominating Committee and OCSBA. I think there's. There, almost all of you get invited to those events. There are a couple of little things here and there. Managing the nominating committee, as Dr. Kelly mentioned. The PTA Council, that meets, I would say, seven times a year roughly.
Every month except for December, and the meetings are two to two and a half hours.
They're on Thursday mornings.
Your portion is relegated to an hour, hopefully, or less. They meet, and then the School Power Foundation, as a member Osborne mentioned, they meet five times a year evenings. They also do Zoom in. The endowment meets on, on the, in the mornings, on Friday mornings. Not typically five times a year roughly, sometimes more, sometimes less. It it seems to be that they're meeting a little less these days. And then the JFMC meets twicey, four times a year. Sometimes twice a year to be on COVID, which is what it was originally.
Another interesting one that the DFMC, Fiscal Management, because Jeff provides a lot of information. And like this past year, he, our past meetings, he's been taking us through all the object codes. And it has union representatives in both unions in that meeting.
And Joint Fiscal Management came out of the bankruptcy. When. I know, I'm sorry. It's like.
Financial crisis.
Financial crisis of the county of Orange that had a ripple effect on multiple school districts, not just Laguna Beach.
Okay, I'll take that back. They were, they had a bankruptcy.
Yeah, so the, so the county of Orange, when they went bankrupt, many districts. That were impacted established the Joint Fiscal Management Committee and with the intent that, and it's actually written into the contract. For both associations, I believe, I know for a fact it's with the Teachers Association, that they have membership on that committee, so that committee is made up of. Really multiple groups that have an interest in ensuring that our fiscal management is sound. And so we go through the the budget. When the governor's budget comes out, we present that information to the JFMC. So it's an opportunity for the board member who sits on that committee, board members plural. To kind of see the same presentations that staff are seeing. And also provide feedback and ask questions just as the staff are doing. So it's, it is a nice opportunity. Again, the board president, just as a reminder, is actually an ad hoc to every single one of these committees, can attend all of them. I know that Jim. It's scheduled does not permit her to do so, nor would she be interested in attending all of these different meetings. But I would, I know Member Norman, last year, didn't take an active role because of that position. But I would encourage all members to be a part of these committees, not just exclude the president just to attend as. As she would like. I think it's important that everyone has a seat. So that's just my advice.
And in past times, when I've had the opportunity to do that, there's meetings that I've gone to, but I. It was always in deference to the appointed representative. They were the person who was representative and. It was more for my gaining information to sit in. And to sit quietly and just, and to listen, but it's, you know, not always possible, but that JFMC, I think. There's no tactful way to. there's no tactful way to say this. It's very important to attend when you commit. I mean, if you, I don't, and that's that, though, some of the meetings I've been at, that member Perry doesn't seem to be able to make the JFMC meetings. And I just think that it's really, Jeff.
Yeah, we try to follow the major state economic and budget cycle with those. So it's about, if a good year, you get four.
It's in the afternoon?
Yeah, always at 3:30. Always at 3:30 in the afternoon.
Like a particular.
As soon as we'll work with who's ever appointed, we work with Victoria to establish a schedule with them to make sure they're available.
Okay.
I wanted.
Two, but, yeah, okay.
I wanted to echo member Vickers' comment on making sure that if we agree to these committees that we're there, I think that's not just critically important for the Joint Fiscal Management Committee, it's important for all of them. And most of these, we have the schedule. We already have the meetings for 75% of these for all of 2023. So obviously, things come up where people get sick or whatever you schedule, you know, a vacation, but the intent really is that we really do our best to make sure that we can attend or we use our alternate, but it's really on us to, to, to cover that.
And I'd add a footnote to that, that when you're, this is just, I mean, something I've done. If you're the alternate, that you pay attention to those dates because the alternate is often called as a last minute. You know, you call up and I, well, I got sick last night, can you go? And if you have paid attention to that on your own calendar, then you available, hopefully you're available. Sometimes they change the calendar. But that's okay. I mean, that's.
So the other thing that the Council of PTAs, I would imagine that meets in the morning at different schools, right? So.
Me to the district office or room 90 above the pool. Yeah, so that's consistent because it's the council PTA, so it's all the site PTAs that meet there. Oh, yeah, always at nine o'clock.
I, I think I'm. We're in discussion.
Express, express any preference you have?
I would do the JFMC. I, I don't mind doing the endowment as an alternate or whatever. I'm interested in the Council of PTAs just because I think it's, you know, information I'm interested in, but there's no way I could go to a series of nine o'clock meetings. So I think that's more tricky. I could maybe be an alternate, but I can't regularly do that. I'm, I'm just not saying I'm volunteering for every committee. I'm just letting you know so people can put in what they're interested in.
I'm, member Vickers, I wanted to.
No, I gotta try.
Sorry, continue my role on School Power Foundation, just for some consistency, because I am starting to understand their financials a little better and some of their goals. So unless anybody else wants to represent it. Okay. And I also looked at Fridays. I have a, I looked at their 2023 dates and I'm, I'm working every single one of their meetings. So even though I wanted to take both so I could see the whole picture of School Power, I, I just wouldn't be able to be there, so.
Two, a whole bunch of Friday mornings at nine.
Yes.
I could be an alternate.
Okay.
But I can't do that regularly.
Okay. So we leave the. We leave the School Power as it is. And we're adding, we're changing the alternate on the endowment. And what are we doing on JFMC?
Right now I have Joan as an interested.
Okay, would you like to do that, Joan? Jeff will, Jeff will do his best to work it so it matches with your work schedule.
Times a year.
Yeah. It's just, it's really.
Interesting.
It's really informative.
Yeah, that, yeah, that's great.
So we, and Jim would like to stay on the PTA Council. And then.
And I have to do Community Coalition again.
We didn't talk about Community Coalition, so.
I do have those dates if anybody needs them.
Okay. And I don't know when they're, I've lost track of when they meet.
It's in the afternoons.
So they.
Switch from morning to afternoon?
It's in the afternoon.
As a Poison Girls Club still?
No, it's at the, it's Senior Center.
Suzie Q. from 2:00 to 3:15, currently January 17th, March 21st, and May 16th.
So just three for the remainder of this school year, currently like every other month, right?
So we need it. Carol's been the alternate, so we need an alternate to that.
January 17th, what were the other two?
So, March 21st and May 16th.
Okay. And you're still doing. Nominating committee?
Yeah. Love that one.
We covered them all.
I need an alternate for Community Coalition.
Here for that.
We have Jim as the nominating committee and Dee as the alternate. Jay Jim as the member and Kelly as alternate. School Power Foundation, Kelly and Jim. School Power Endowment, Dee and Joan. Fiscal Management, Joan, Jan, and Jim as alternate.
Joan, would you be interested in being the alternate for PTA Council?
Joan, we don't, we don't have a pattern of using alternates very much. We've been pretty successful with our selected people attending. So I don't think you'd have to worry about.
Yeah.
Four, so I, those days are, I mean, not four, maybe like 2:30 or three. So I, I have no flexibility on certain days. But other days, I can work around it.
Thank you. So now we can over that good time.
Except I need an alternate for College and Career Advantage.
Oh, that's right, we need to, Jim, would you like to? Would, do you like to do that? CCA?
Oh, yeah, that'd be fine.
Yeah, he just needs to be asked within enough time.
What's the, is there a standing meeting schedule for this? And which, do you have any of those dates, Victoria?
Well, it may change.
If they don't give me dates, it's, meetings are Wednesdays or Thursdays at 9:00 AM, usually in March, June, September, and two in December. But they don't have their date yet because they're going through what we're going through.
Gotcha, their annual reorganization.
I actually have the proposed dates. Would you like to know what they are? See how quick I can get.
So did they come on the new agenda?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll look and see if there's some of the alternate, some of the dates that I can make as an alternate, then I'll say yes. But if most of them I can't make, then I'm not a very good choice.
So right now, they have them slated for March 9th. These are the 2023 dates. March 9th, June 6th, September 14th, December 14th, December 19th.
Okay, I can do about 50% of those, so I'm happy to take the alternate, Jim, if you'd like. Okay.
I was gonna ask about that, that. What is the rule if an alternate can't go and a member can't go? Can another member be asked?
Could, we would just have to probably do just an affidavit signing that that person is filling in as alternate for voting rights. And that, that's something we can.
Okay.
It happens in most opportu, whether it is voting, like in a delegate assembly, you could sign your vote over to that person. You just would need to do that. I don't think that would be a problem. Yeah, pro, well.
Well, though, i- if we have one member there, I think.
As long as you have quorum, we're okay. Yeah.
It was, it's, used to be ROP, Regional Occupation Program. It's now College and Career Advantage, CCA. It's for that, what, what they used to call vocational education, but now it's gone far beyond that. And it's, most of the courses, some of them are in bell schedule at the, we're in, we're in a joint agreement with Capistrano. So we, the high schools offer classes within a bell schedule, and then there are after-school classes, and you can go, students can go to any of those. The board?
Eddie, yeah.
Oh, it's a, it's actually, it's actually a board. It's a joint board.
I see.
And for many years, we were two and two, and then there was some reorganization that went, that took place, and Capistrano has three members and we have two. So it's not really.
It's for, it's formal. They vote, because it's money, there's commitment of money.
Kevin.
Yeah.
We have an executive director who actually is also partly employed by Capistrano. I see.
In last week's weekly update, there was a little thing on it that you could click on it and it would show you some classes. And the first class is one of our students doing robotics. And it was just spectacular as far as the things that he, that he was making as far as for the, for the school district.
Most of the courses now have A through G approval, certification. And that's a huge change. I mean, it used, it's, it's really grown. It's grown a lot. It's very interesting. But it's.
Yeah, it's really.
It's really an outreach to, for technical education and career pathways. And classes, you take two classes and then a capstone class.
I'll put the last report in our box so you can have, so you can see the catalog and whatnot. I mean, it's very, very impressive.
Well, they can put together a packet too of their information and send it to our district. It would be helpful for Joan, I think, to learn. It's just.
I think we have a report upcoming, John. I think he's coming, Paul's coming to do a presentation to the board too. March, I think, is on the calendar.
Yes, could, could I, because I know last year was confusing. Ms. Webb, when you read them, can you just read the main and not the alternate to start? And then we can read the alternates on a second reading? Okay.
So College and Career Advantage, Jan and Dee. Community Coalition, Jim. Nominating Committee, Jim. Council of PTAs, Jim. School Power Foundation, Kelly. School Power Endowment, Dee. JFMC, Joan and Jan. Whatever he has. Okay, alternates. College and Career Advantage, alternate Kelly. Community Coalition, alternate Kelly. Nominating Committee, Dee. Council of PTAs, Joan. School Power Foundation, Jim. School Power Endowment, Joan. JFMC, Jim.
Yeah, I think. So if it comes up that something with Joan, if she needs to make a change, we can just bring it back at a time and.
Yeah, because there's nothing voting in these, with the exception of CCA. CCA is the only one that really is like formal, formal, because you're voting. I mean, honestly, if, if, these are the people we have for endowment, but if for some reason, like, for example, tomorrow, you know, it's very last minute. But if somebody wasn't able to attend, I know member Perry can't attend, and a member wanted to fill in who's not the alternate, because the alternate couldn't attend, you're more than welcome to attend and provide an update to the board. It's just, nothing precludes you from doing that. The only one that would be something we would need to do paperwork on would probably be CCA because of the voting component of it, so.
Thank you. Motion, please?
I'm sorry, it's not, it's discussion, so you're fine. Wrong item.
The next one. The next one is 12F, setting meeting dates, time and place for 2023. So Jason, you.
Yeah, so as you can see, we, we did make that shift to the, the second meeting in January, which is was a study session. Now it will end recognition event. It will maintain that, but it'll be on the 2nd of February. We already have the 23rd agenda for the study session designed as to what we're going to cover at that study session, which will be both facilities sustain, sustainability. We have a proposed joint meeting with the city of Laguna Beach on April 20th. We have another recognition, June 1st, a business meeting on the 15th of June, and then the one area that we we can decide on tonight is the 20th or the 27th of July, either one of those works for staff. This is not set in stone. The board did take action to adjust your bylaw more recently. That allows you to change your general meetings. You're, you're not stuck to these. The board has the authority at a meeting to change them. All we have to do is notice on our website the change, and so you're more than welcome to change general meetings as you need to. So if for some reason, something was to come up in, you know, May, and we want to move the July meeting because something happened, someone has something they have to do, we can do that at that time. So so I would ask that the board determine the 20th or the 27th, so we can send out what will officially be what we're going to put out, understanding that it is all adjustable, so.
They have a longer period of time that they can take their vacations.
If you'd like to, that would be fantastic.
Last year, that was a, that was an expressed desire to.
Last year, we canceled the, yeah, we, we kind of moved, yes. The larger length of time, we did move the June meeting a little bit as well and, and shifted and adjusted that to provide a little more, more of a break, as, as well as for the board, because you have, that June is not the only meeting we have in June. We have the my evaluation session happens during, so you actually have multiple, you have about three or four meetings typically in June. Not all of them are, are listed as business meetings. So yes, the 27th would probably work out great for us, because we all, we will all be back and work anyways, because the leadership team will be back. So the 27th would work for us.
I can't say I recall the discussion from board members of what, if there was a, why we hadn't set on a date. Do you?
There was no issue. When we talked about it, it was either one. So we brought it back as either one, letting the board at this time make that ultimate decision.
I support the longer gap in between the June and July, so I support July 27th as well.
Because staff has to be back to prepare for that.
I agree.
So this is an action item.
The move.
Student vote? Board members, all in favor? Aye, opposed, 401. And then we have our annual reminders, 12G. So do you want to go through them, Jason? You want me to read them or?
I'll do them. So again, the Board of Education's reminded that the district has the opportunity to purchase the Eliso School property in the year 2041 for $1. Jeff, there you go. There's the dollar. We keep that in the filing cabinet. This special notes to remain a part of all annual organizational meetings until said purchase option is exercised or expires. $1 bill is on file in the business office as a reminder to future boards of education. The dollar bill may be used to exercise that option in 2041. The First Amendment to the optional repurchase effective December 11th, 2012, enabled the district to establish the trust account, which we spoke about earlier, that holds the deed to the property pursuant to any default by the current property owner. The district may record the deed by satisfying the existing loan upon any future default by the current owner. The next is Resolution Number 1-02, which is the Facilities Repair and Replacement Program. The Board of Education's reminded that by adoption of the Resolution Number 01-02 on February 27th, 2001, the intention and desire was to continue this program to ensure future repair and replacement of the district's facilities. And that was just noted in the resolution back then by that board, that as a reminder to future boards of the reason and intent behind that account, so.
Part of the reason that comes forward is that, at that time, the, there was at least one board member that wanted to make it permanent and never could be changed, and boards can't do that, because, but. And never could be changed and boards can't do that because, but it, it does state somewhere in there that it's a four-fifth vote to undo that. So it's, that was as strong as you could make it as far as keeping it in place. Um. The, the Aliso date is getting closer. You got, you guys gotta watch that.
Yes.
Although.
I've let them know. We went through it in great detail, because I told them they're going to be in charge at that point.
Does this mean that we can get it back?
Yes.
Yes, yes, one dollar and it's ours. Um.
Not a particular dollar.
The key, the key word is may, uh, may be used.
Yeah, it's, it is. Thank you.
Just recognize the property is not as it was.
No, it's not.
So.
The location.
The location is.
Location, location, okay.
Location, location, correct. The location is, uh, the same, so.
Lang Park, South Laguna.
It's by the church.
It's a, it's Vista Aliso Senior Housing.
What's the church's name? It's right there.
It's the Methodist Church.
It's right next to the Methodist Church. It's something to see.
It was a, it was Arthur Elementary School. Right. Which allowed us to do a lot of, a lot of remodeling, I believe, primarily at the high school. Okay, so that concludes our business, um, motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Is there a second? Board, student vote. All board members.
Aye.
Opposed, I, four zero one, so if you want to stay, you're right.
Yeah. It's my dilated eyes.